Would I call the order, the special meeting notice for today? Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Shepherd Rami.
Here.
Councilmember Taltz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski.
Here.
Mayor Udi.
Here. The special meeting agenda was posted 24 hours prior to the special meeting at the City Hall, the Crow Public Library, in the Stoneman Building. The special meeting agenda was also posted on the city's website. Would like to move to new business item number one, consideration of the mandatory vaccine for employees represented by San Marino Firefighters Association.
Mayor, I have a request.
Yes, sir.
I would like to move to continue the item until next week so that it can be, well, I think that having a meeting like this where we're deciding this type of issue, which is very important to a lot of people, both pro and con, but trying to decide this issue on a 24-hour notice does not provide with the public a fully noticed right to be heard. And I do not think that waiting a week would do damage to or harm the public in any regard. In fact, I think we benefit from hearing from everybody on this issue. And so I would like to move to continue to next week, which is next Wednesday.
Seventeen.
We have another meeting at that time, so it's.
November seventeenth at 6:00 P. M.
There you go.
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd Rami.
Yes.
Councilmember Taltz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski.
Yes.
Mayor Udi.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Would I then close the special meeting and move on to the regularly scheduled council meeting for today? Since we've already done the pledge of allegiance tonight and done roll call, we can move forward. Oh, no, we didn't need to roll call. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Shepherd Rami.
Here again.
Councilmember Taltz.
Still here.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski.
Here.
Mayor Udi.
Here. The agenda for the regular meeting was posted 72 hours prior to the meeting at the City Hall, the Crow Public Library in the Stoneman Building. It was also made available on the city's website. Public comments. The city welcomes public comments and input. At this time, the public may address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. But please remember that pursuant to state law, we may not discuss or take action on any of the items not on the meeting's agenda. Please note that the comments will be timed to two minutes and timed by the staff. City Clerk Baker, would you please explain how public comments might be done tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. For each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment. We will accept comments in three ways. We will take in-person comments for each item. Please fill out a speaker card and turn it into me if you wish to speak on an item. There is a countdown timer to the left of the public microphone to help speakers keep track of the remaining time to speak. We will also accept comments via email sent to cityclerk@cityofsamorino.org. The email address is also found on the agenda. These will then be read into the record. We must receive these items before the public comment period for the particular item ends. The comments may be summarized, if necessary, to limit it to under two minutes. We will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raised hand feature, which is a button that's found by clicking on Participants and then clicking on Raised Hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please do not use this feature until we have asked for public comment, or else we may not see it or know which item you are asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a message using the chat box saying you would like to speak on this particular agenda item. Comments will be accepted only until the end of the public comment period for that item. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have anyone here that would like to make a public comment?
We do. Mr. Unia.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. But first, because we're nearing the end of a term of candidate as you do as mayor, I want to thank all of you on the city council for your service to the, to the city, especially you as mayor and Susan, as you take on the new responsibilities. We all wish you the very best. My comments have to do with the headline in the Tribune that I received today about the COVID outbreak hits the police department. I want to tell you how shocked I am that this situation has occurred and is allowed to be occur in San Marino. I think it is completely unacceptable to this city to have members who are interacting, employees who are interacting with the public and some of them who are elderly, such as me and others. And the danger it puts the citizens of this community by people, in my opinion, selfishly and unwarrantedly not being vaccinated to protect themselves and to protect them. I am just outraged at the situation we find ourselves in. Now, I know that we can't do, we can't lay off the people because of the arbitration thing. But my recommendation is, if it could possibly be done, is that you put any employee on the city who is not vaccinated on unpaid leave. We just want to get rid of those people interacting with the citizens of the, of San Marino. It's a danger to us. It's unacceptable, and please take action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other public input?
I have no other questions for people in the room, but I do have a request from Ms. Nene Nakamura.
Please.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Let me, oh, I'm being a little challenged here on Zoom. Can you still hear me? Hello? My name is.
Just fine.
Oh, great. Okay. So, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, I was hoping to see an SB nine draft resolution in tonight's city council agenda. I'm hoping maybe it's not too late to see it in the planning commission agenda for November 23rd. The housing bill SB nine will become law on January 1st, 2022, and will greatly lessen local control over land use decisions. The residents need to know the city council is protecting single-family neighborhoods. I want to ensure that the mayor and city council have been working on a resolution in order to mitigate the negative impacts of SB nine to our community. Monday night, I watched the Alhambra City Council meeting give a presentation on SB nine, and they had a 74-minute discussion of its impacts. So I'm seeing other cities scrambling to do, to get a resolution in place before January 1st, which is imperative that every city do this, not just San Marino. And I can visibly see other cities doing things, but I, I don't know what's going on in San Marino. And during that Alhambra City Council meeting, they mentioned cities, surrounding cities, that were working on a resolution. And they listed on one of their PowerPoint slides, San Marino. And I'm like, well, I'm really active on this issue, but I didn't know you were doing anything. So why do I need to see it in the city of Alhambra to know that you guys are working on a resolution? Because, you know, there are going to be a lot of angry people at the beginning of the year if you guys aren't, you know, advertising that you're doing something. This housing bill will quadruple the density in a single-family neighborhood and will eliminate discretionary review, public hearings, and an environmental review. So, you know, and it'll only provide market rate housing. There's no requirement for affordable housing as well. You know, I said.
Please wrap your comments up.
Yeah, well, I sent everyone a draft of the L.A. city resolution, and I haven't heard a peep out of the majority of the council. So I would hope that you actually pursue this, that you look like you're pursuing it because there is going to be a shockwave coming January 1st. And I really want to see that, that we're working on it, and I don't want to hear from it from a different council. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk Baker, are there any other public comments?
Yes, I also received an email for a public comment. I did not get it in time to distribute it to council or to the public prior to the meeting, so I will read it into the record. This is from Dr. Gassan Ramani from 2110 South Oak Mill Avenue. And he states, "To preserve the high quality and unique character of our city and to protect the value, livability, aesthetics, and historic nature of our neighborhoods, and also to assert maximum amount of local control allowed under new California laws, having reviewed what some other cities around us and the SGC are pursuing, I recommend the city adopt the following protections. One, new construction under SB nine is prohibited in any historic district identified and documented in the city's Historic Resources Survey, adopted in 2020. Two, removal of any mature heritage or oak trees prohibited for new construction related to SB nine. Also, a city already has a tree protection ordinance in place. All such construction must also comply with city's existing ordinance. Three, maximum height of new construction under SB nine required to be within city's existing objective standards for the seven residential area districts of 30 feet or 35 feet, depending on district. Four, front yard setback of new construction under SB nine required to be within city's existing objective standards for the seven residential area districts of 25 feet to 40 feet, depending on district. Five, all new construction under SB nine required to have affordability covenant for 30 years to mandate rental prices set at low to very low income. Six, all new construction under SB nine required to have property owner live in one of new units for a minimum of three years and buy any inspections required to be allowed by city to ensure owner complies. Seven, for each unit of new construction under SB nine required to have minimum one enclosed parking space on property and no overnight street parking allowed. And eight, all new construction under SB nine required to be LEED certified and have only electric appliances to reduce environmental impact and help city meet climate crisis goals."
And those are all the general public comments I have for this time.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move on now to the city manager's report. Dr. Marla?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can you bring up the presentation, please? All right, we start on an excellent high note, which was trunk or treat. I hope many of you came out on Friday, October 29th, and joined our first-ever trunk-or-treat event at Lacy Park. And given the number of people who were there, I would guess that the odds are pretty good that many of the people in this room were there. I am delighted to announce that we expected about 500 people, and we got about 3,000 people, which was a wonderful, wonderful validation of the incredible work that has been done by our Community Services Department, led by our new director Kathy Johnson, who of course is here in the audience. Hello, Kathy. An outstanding job. There were so many people in the park. There were so many kids dressed in costume. There were so many adults dressed in costume. It really was wonderful to be back in Lacy Park as a community and celebrating. So I suspect this will not be a one-off event, but will morph into something that we do regularly. The expenditure for the event came in at a little over $12,000, which, given how many people were there, is certainly an expenditure of money, but kind of feels like a bargain. It was really a great event. Congratulations to all the staff that was there, all the attendees that were there and all the staff that made this happen in the community groups. Clicker does not seem to be working. Can you go to the next slide, please? All right, very good. So on that note, I just want to reference a couple of employees. You know, I like to do a little spotlight. And I want to start first with the recreation staff that are part of the Community Services Department. This, of course, is our recreation manager, Eddie Coverubias, a rec supervisor, Angie Padilla, and our recreation coordinator, Victoria Marshall. And although I pointed out our new director Kathy Johnson, she is nothing but gracious in reminding me regularly that it's actually these people who are putting these fantastic events on. So these are the same trio of people that put the fantastic Fourth of July event on just a few months ago, and we could not be prouder to have these three doing incredible work in our community. I also want to highlight, many people in the community probably know because you got the alert that there was an incident that happened last week over at the high school. You were asked via a NICS alert to stay away from the area, which I know always feels cryptic and mysterious. But there was a dangerous situation that arose over there, and I just want to give some kudos to really the entire police team that responded. It could have been, it could have been a very bad situation, and it could have turned incredibly dangerous multiple, multiple times. So big kudos to the team that was out there. And I especially want to highlight Sergeant Candace Torres, who engaged in some significant negotiations with a potentially dangerous person on site and managed to get the incident resolved without further incident. It was incredible work. She has very specialized training in this area and really did a phenomenal job. So congratulations to her. We're very grateful for everything that she does for us. And last but not least, I want to acknowledge Captain Jason Settles. That's out of our fire department. And I'm sure many of you are aware that just recently we completed our booster vaccination program for our homebound seniors. This is a program that Captain Settle oversaw and put into place. And we're very grateful that we were able to get these booster shots and help out members of our community. So thank you, as always, to the fire department. Thank you, Robert. Just a couple of other pieces of news. I'm actually going to flip-flop the order on these because Ms. Nakamura, as always, is prescient and stole a little bit of my thunder, but very well deserved. The city is, in fact, hard at work on crafting standards related to SB nine and SB 35. Much work has been going on behind the scenes with staff. Your council members have been hard at work on this item. We get commentary from them regularly for things to include in that ordinance, and we are working hard to get as much in there as possible. The timeline, as Ms. Nakamura mentioned, is that the ordinance will be going to the Planning Commission at their November 23rd meeting. This is the first step that's required for that process. And then after that, we will be back in front of the city council at our regularly scheduled December 8th meeting. And so that the county, the community is aware, we're going to be adopting both a regular ordinance and an urgency ordinance, which will therefore go into effect immediately. So we certainly are listening to the community. We know that this is a big deal with serious impacts, especially to our way of life here in San Marino. And we are hard at work in protecting everybody as best as we can from, from these new state laws. So rest assured that we are, we are indeed on top of that. Then going back up to the top, I just want to give one final reminder that we are looking for general plan updates, steering committee members. We have only received four applications so far, and we need somewhere in the neighborhood of 15. And we're hoping for a diverse group of people with lots of different approaches to thinking about the issues. So please, if you are interested in participating, our general plan update is an incredibly important multi-year process that we're going to be going through. We need people that care about San Marino, which I know is everybody, and people who can devote a little bit of time to this process. And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call City Hall. We will get you answers and try to make you feel more comfortable about joining this group. We would certainly love to see your participation. And I believe that concludes my report for this evening. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any members of the council have questions to the city manager?
I have one question.
Please.
Thank you. We'll be able to, assuming for purposes of argument, given that it's just a couple of days away. If we do not receive even 15 applicants or more, will we be able to extend that date?
Absolutely. It's not a statutory date. That was just for convenience. So we certainly will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council members have any questions? It's Dr. Marla?
I just wanted to add that there has been a town hall about the general plan update. So if people are interested, because it sounds kind of vague about what we're going to try to achieve, the mayor and I will be involved in that, and you could go online to the city website. And there's already been a pretty extensive presentation, thank you very much, from our director and staff on that. And so I think that might help if you're interested or you know somebody who might be interested in some of the subjects that we discussed because it will be important for the future of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Would I can move on to motion to waive further readings? Is there one?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd Rami.
Yes.
Councilmember Taltz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski.
Yes.
Mayor Udi.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I can move on to the public hearing item number one, the first reading of an ordinance concerning grad night in the use in a C1 zone. Who has a presentation, please, from interim director Hamilton?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. The item before you tonight is a text amendment in the C1 zone to codify a use that has been in this community for generations, the grad night. And it codifies it in such a way to give it some certainty, predictability, and maintain protections for the community as well. The ordinance itself allows for this use. It has some performance standards built into it, again, to provide for protection to the surrounding neighborhoods. But it gives the grad night use and the folks that work so hard every year to put this together, the flexibility to go anywhere in the C1 zone, provided certain parameters are met. This concludes my presentation on this text amendment. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. I've worked closely with Mr. Horgan. He's a wonderful gentleman. I went out to tour the site where they're out, and it's an amazing, amazing facility and very exciting to see what they do for this community. So I'm here for any questions. This is the first reading of the ordinance. It did go to the Planning Commission on October the 27th. There were some, I believe, 27th. There were some questions and comments, but the planning commission did move that and recommend 5-0 that the, this ordinance be presented to you for adoption.
Thank you. Dr. Wong, do you have any questions of staff?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd Rami, any questions to staff?
No, just thank you and as well, thank members of the community for coming forward with a good product and planning commission. Thank you.
Mr. Taltz?
Yes, I just have one question. That is, section 4K, "The project shall not reduce required onsite parking spaces or obstruct passive travel for the property." There are very temporary. It's done temporarily where they're moving things in and out of, of their, presently the bank, where a truck may have to sit there while they bring it down and, and move it on. Would that be violated? Would that be a violation of this section eight? No, it wouldn't be. That's not the intent of this section. The intent of this section is to give them the flexibility anywhere in the C1 zone. But look, taking a longer-term view of it, temporary blockages are not things that we're going to enforce or even look at, quite frankly. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, any questions to staff?
None. Delighted we're at this point. Thank you.
I have no questions either. I'd like to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak on this item?
Yes, Mr. Bob Horgan.
City Council and staff, thank you. A particular thank you to the staff and Mr. Hamilton. He's worked tremendously hard to put this all together. I also thank the city council for moving it forward. I am sorry that we couldn't have a full house here tonight, but due to the high school's open house, we only have a limited number. Would you please raise your hand if you're here? We only brought a limited number. But they all wanted to come and thank the city council and the staff. And we're here. We can live with it. Let's move forward.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight that would like to speak?
Yes, I'm getting several messages in the chat on Zoom showing support for this. Let me see. Mrs., sorry, Mrs. Ellen Mochazuki would like to show support. Ma'am, would you like to also provide a public comment? Sure. Then we also, Steve Chuck also says that he supports grad night and moving forward with this.
Good.
And that's all.
Thank you very much. I'd like to bring it to council for discussion. Dr. Wong, any thoughts on this?
No, just want to thank the staff and, I mean, you know, thank the PTA and the old guards.
Mr. Taltz?
No, let's get it done, but I'd like to thank Mr. Horgan and the rest of the public here in support of the, something that we're happy to do for such a wonderful community project.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd Rami?
I second that as well, Mr. Horgan. You are a very determined gentleman, and it was a pleasure to work with you. I did not know you before this last year, but I appreciate and I'm glad the end result is finally upon us. And we are having an expedited, so you know, second hearing.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
We are timed, okay, Mayor?
All right, that's fine, that's fine.
But thank you, and I would be happy to make the motion.
Vice Mayor, do you have any thoughts on this?
I will call Mr. Horgan a city jewel. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your persistence. Is there a motion, please?
I moved to waive full reading and introduce for first reading by title only, ordinance number O-21-1384, an ordinance of the city of San Marino, amending the San Marino Municipal Code, section 23.01, 01.01, and 23.03.01 concerning grad night use in the C1 zone in the city of San Marino.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd Rami.
Yes.
Councilmember Taltz.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski.
Yes.
Mayor Udi.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Would like to move on now to item number two in new business, the approval of a resolution for the filing of an application for Prop 38 per capita grant funds. Director Throne, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The item before you is a request to authorize the submission of a grant application to the state of California for Proposition 68, park bond funds. In 2018, California voters approved, setting aside grant funds on a per capita basis to improve parks. Based on population, the city is eligible to receive $186,097. They can, that can be used to improve a local park. The city has one named park, Lacy Park, which is ineligible to receive these funds due to the collection of the weekend non-resident fee. Fortunately, many years ago, the city zoned the main road medians as parks and recreation, making those spaces eligible for this grant. This project originated from resident comments on how nice it would be to have another place near the shops and stores to relax and drink coffee. In March of this year, the council considered the inclusion of a parklet project at the northwest corner of Huntington Drive and Sierra Madre Boulevard. At this, at that time, the council decided to wait on the project. For the city to accept this grant, a resolution and a commitment of 25% local match or $47,000 is required. If the council approves the submittal of the grant application, which is due before the end of the calendar year, and it is accepted by the state, the department would request a modification to the 2021-22 capital budget to include the project. An estimated $15,000 cost is expected to hire a landscape architect. That cost is included as part of our local match. The department would use the request for proposals advertisement process to locate a qualified landscape architect. Typically, this level of expenditure is within the authority of the city manager to award. However, as this is a very visible project and community involvement is paramount, the department could easily bring a recommendation to the city council for your consideration. Once hired, a landscape architect would work with the community to develop several designs for this corner, which of course would get, would need your ultimate approval. If the council elects not to submit an application, the grant funds would be distributed to another agency. This concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you. Questions from council? Councilmember Shepherd Rami, any questions to staff?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Mayor. My first question has to do with the fiscal impact. And I think that we are supposed to match whatever is the grant monies that we end up taking. And so on page 30 of our agenda, I was a little, did not understand the reference. If we have a possible grant in the amount of $186,000 approximately, and we, why would we only be planning the fiscal impact of $47,000? Won't we be spending an equivalent amount?
No, the, the state requires a 25% local match. And so 25% of 186,000 and change is $47,000. So that would be the city's expenditure in addition to the 186 that would come from the state.
Thank you. I didn't see that language here. I thought it said a match. So I appreciate the clarification. The other issue is above that, and it discusses, prior to construction, staff would hire a landscape architect and conduct an extensive community outreach. And my concern or question is about the hiring of the landscape architect and how staff would go out. Would that be something that would be presumably an independent search with multiple candidates? Or how is that done?
Typically, what we would do if we were hiring an architect or an engineer, we would put together requests for qualifications, requests for proposals. We would advertise that through a service called Planet Bids
that would reach out to pretty much every landscape architect in Los Angeles and in Southern California. They would be able to review our documents and then submit proposals by a date certain that we would give them. We would then review those proposals and we would come up with a ranking based on their qualifications. Typically, what we would do is we would then look at the cost proposal of the highest ranked consultants to see what their fee is. One of the things that I like to do is I don't like to surprise consultants in that if our budget is fifteen thousand dollars, I make it very clear, our budget is fifteen thousand dollars. So consultants that can't make their margin on that, they will not waste their time because it is expensive to prepare a proposal. After that, based on the purchasing ordinance, I would make a recommendation to the finance director and city manager. However, in this case, because there is a fairly important public component, I think it would be handy if the council is so interested to bring, bring this back to you and say, you know, here, here's our process. What we would normally do with a, you know, a hundred thousand dollar design contract, that would do the same process to bring it back to you just so that you can see, you know, what the responses were, so that you've got some comfort as to who would be designing this project.
Okay, and just follow up. The fifteen thousand dollars would be the design proposal for the entire project? Wouldn't it be something, isn't it like an architectural process in the sense that, you know, there's a concept, for example, for San Marino Center, and then it goes to whatever committees and public outreach, and then it's actually drawn into a plan form so people can bid on it. But that same person in, in the case of the San Marino Center, Crane, worked on it both at the concept and at the contract and continued to work on it for the final drawings. I don't know what the technical term is. I'm sorry, the plan, the blueprint. And so is that, so is fifteen thousand dollars a cap of what we would spend, or that's just saying that is the concept for this parklet, if you will?
That would be the expense that I would be wanting to make for not only developing sketches of what could be done, having that run through a community process similar to what we did with San Marino Center. And then once that gets to the point where there's a consensus that we really like this, I consider, I would bring that to the council because this is a very prominent location and it really needs to be looked at. You know, at almost with the same sort of scrutiny as San Marino Center, just because of its, of its visibility. And then if the the concept is, is agreed to, then then that would be turned into a set of plans, but all done with same landscape architect under the same contract and all known at the beginning. Instead of doing a little bit and then, then later on, a year or two later, doing a little bit more, this would all be in in one package. That would be the expectation for the consultant as to what the scope of work is and how much work that they can do within a fifteen thousand dollar budget.
All right. And my last question is for the San Marino Center, the city staff went with Crane because of an existing work here in the city. Do we have a landscape architect or consultant that is considered appropriate for this?
Not recently. There is a landscape architect associated with the design of the San Marino Center renovation. We would not, we did not directly contract with them. They're a sub consultant to the architect for this building. We would start fresh and see who's out there who would want to be interested in performing this work for us. So there, there is no preset expectation as to who would do it.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Tal, any questions to staff?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Dr. Wong, any question?
Yes, I, so the fifteen thousand is a part of the forty seven dozen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor, any questions to staff?
Yes, I know this is really early, but would you envision in this parklet some outdoor furniture or just landscaping?
I really don't know. At this point, this would be part of the when, when you develop a project like this, you have your, your consultant throw a lot of ideas out and you see how they resonate with the community and from there, it, it winds up being, you know, what your concept is. Currently, there's a building there which is used for a variety of functions. There's also a bus, a bus locker, a bike locker, excuse me. There are all kinds of things that can be done. The city, though, has not only a design budget, but also an overall construction cost. And we would want to make sure that we're very conscious of that because all the dollars over the, the forty seven that we would be spending and the almost two hundred thousand from the state, that would then have to come from the city. So at this point, there's, there are no preconceived notions that as what could be there. We really have a kind of a blank slate, although there are two huge trees and a structure there.
So yes, the concept can go beyond landscape.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
And I have two questions. That eighty six thousand dollars is already earmarked for San Marino. You said that if we don't take it, they will give that money to some other city?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. And then if we take the money, but don't come up with a project that we all agree upon, what happens to the money? I assume it goes back to the state to be reallocated?
It would go back to the state. These kinds of funds are always in arrears in that you make the qualifying expenditure and then they make a reimbursement to you. So they don't send you a check for one hundred and eighty six thousand dollars.
And then my, my final question or thought is, could the parklet be defined as a parklet between the remodeled San Marino Center and the Crow Public Library? So to use some of these funds to offset the removal of that wall and the creation of the mall type feel?
I think it has to be parkland.
It, it has to be parkland. And this is not zone is park. Unfortunately, zone is our one.
Just cross my own.
My question, I'm sorry, Mayor, you made me think.
This one, go ahead.
What about the medians? Could this money be used on a project to improve, say, a portion of the medians either related to this project or at various places where we have other issues with our medians, be it, you know, landscaping? Is it limited? If we go ahead, would it have to be used on that corner? Or if we took the money and the project was, monies were better spent perhaps on another parkland area? And I'm, you know, air quoting.
Like a jogging path down the median.
Or water reclamation, et cetera, whatever we, this community would like.
You could, that is certainly within the realm of possibilities. Something like a jogging path has, at least during my tenure here at the city, not really been overly encouraged in the medians. It is used as, as a park. So I mean, we, we have that as a, as a, as a benefit going for us. This is something that was identified, I believe, through one of the surveys performed about two years ago as, as an area that people wanted to have a little more.
But in any case, you said you were going to do public outreach. So we apply for the funds, we get it, then you go through your public outreach comment or process to get feedback and then come back with the final recommendation.
But you do have to define a project.
Okay.
And so at this juncture, if you define this as the, as the project and as we're going through, it evolves into maybe spreading out with other things, then that would be something we would have to make sure that the state is okay with in, in spending that money. But at least we would have a reservation for these funds.
Well, just, just to follow that down. So would it be possible to say that the parklet or possibly the median parklands improvements and make it as broad and general as we can to qualify? So then we can go through this. Because I think, you know, there might be interest for work elsewhere that might be a good use of that money.
I can certainly modify the project description to be as
Broad as possible.
Fuzzy.
Broad and as loose as possible, staying within, so that we have flexibility, but also again, it's, it's getting, getting our earmark in so that we have that. I can certainly do that for the council and when I get to that point, I can definitely share with you how we sort of stretch the definition of this project.
And one other concern I had, have you done any outreach or will the local businesses that are nearby be part of the discussion for this? Because there are several longstanding highly regarded businesses there that have a lot of community ties. So I would like them to be as well, since it will, so if it is a parklet concept in, in large part or in any part, would you reach out to the local businesses?
Oh, absolutely. Well, the psychic company already knows.
That's true.
All right, I'd like to move this discussion along for a couple of comments. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, is there anyone in the virtual world?
Yes, Mrs. Debbie.
Hi, I'm Debbie with Titan Travel. And I don't know if you guys remember, but back in twenty fourteen, I worked with the rec department and we had the farmer's market here. I arranged with the owners of my complex to arrange to get every week four porta potties in the back so we could handle things correctly. Well, you guys decided to poo poo the idea after five months of me working with people to do this. And I'm not saying you, it was the council that did it because your local people said I was bringing in derelicts. The derelicts they were referring to were the kids that were coming, enjoying the music of the local high school and middle school playing for people that were here. It was, the kids were getting their bobas and all their other little drinks and stuff. A lot of the city people were coming out. We didn't have parking issues because people parked across the street or they parked over on the other side of Huntington, over by, I call it the cable building behind me, across from the gas station. And it really worked out great. We had over two hundred kids that signed a petition asking you to please keep it because they enjoyed coming here on Friday nights. I worked with all of the businesses here, only one, which supposedly should have been able to figure this out since they are psychic company, were against it. And now you want to propose this, and I'm going to say no, because you want to park that you said that I was bringing in derelicts for. Where are we going to park all these people now? If they're coming in during the week, we don't have enough parking with our own street area. So please do that here. Put it in the medians, put in the, the running path. That's great. But if you're going, you know, right now, I know the police department has worked several times keeping homeless people out of our little house that we have, which will be erected soon due to Rotary to be the little Christmas house again. That's something that's a tradition in this city, especially with Christmas coming and, well, we used to have Santa on the boulevard. Um, so please reconsider what you're doing here to us. One is the businesses and two, for the shame you put me through for the five months I was working really hard to try and bring value to the city.
Thank you, Debbie, for your comments. There any other public comments on this item?
There are another request for comments.
I'd like to bring it back to council for discussion. Dr. Wong, any thoughts on this?
Well, I just believe that we're going to use this fund to improve that little park over there. I don't think we're trying to make a park out of it, right? Director Throne? I mean, we're only using this fund for improvement.
Yeah, that's correct. It's only for improvement.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tal, any thoughts on this?
I agree with Council member Wong. These funds are going to be used for the improvement of the area and not necessarily as a park for people to drive to and, and use. I think that the use will be probably from the Starbucks overflow and maybe even people waiting to come into the services that are offered there locally. So I, I don't see this a problem that, and I support this.
Thank you. Council member Shepard Rami, any thoughts on this? You got to share?
I, I am more interested probably in seeing what we could do to improve the medians or some of the other areas in the city because I think that there are extreme traffic and congestion problems right there. We're already dealing with that through our traffic study and our work with the police to keep that area safe. So I, I'm not really one to support adding more facilities there, but improving what it is, the structure that's there. I could see it being used for things that are worthy at that location as it currently is. And then perhaps the money as well being meant to improve the center in that area of city hall and where the streets come together or elsewhere that might be worthwhile. So I would keep an open mind and like to hear community ideas on that for some of the funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, any thoughts on this?
I support a broadly written application. Thank you.
I too support a very broadly written application for flexibility. Is there a motion, please?
I've moved to approve resolution number R dash twenty one dash twenty five approving the filing of an application for proposition sixty eight per capita grant funds from the state of California Department of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Wong?
Yes.
Council member Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Council member Talz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I'd like to move now on to the consent calendar. Do any council members wish to pull any items from the consent calendar?
My only question is for a city attorney, if I'm going to vote no on an item for the same reasons that I have continued to vote no on it because of issues of its construction. Should I pull it?
I think for the record, it's cleaner if you just request that that item be pulled for a separate vote.
Thank you. Then I will pull item nine, please, Mayor.
Okay, item nine. Do any other council members wish to pull anything? Is there a motion to approve items three, four, five, six, seven, eight, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen?
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Wong?
Yes.
Council member Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Council member Talz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'd now like to discuss item number nine, Director, or you know, Director Hamilton, please.
Yes, the item, the item before you is a second reading of the ordinance that was presented to the city council on September eighth, which prohibits the feeding of PFAL and establishes an administrative citation process for violators or people found to be in violation of this provision of the ordinance. The intent here, as I understand it, it predates me, it's really to serve as a deterrent to this type of activity. Of course, we wouldn't go if, if this ordinance is adopted and implemented, we wouldn't go straight to administrative remedies. We would do outreach to folks. We would let them know that it's problematic to conduct this type of activity in the city as it is in neighboring cities as well. That would be our first approach. So this is the second reading. And I'm here for any further questions.
Thank you. Council member Shepard Rami, do you have any questions, staff?
No, I, my concerns remain that it is overly broad of prohibiting the feeding of any wild bird that passes through your yard. And I think it could be handled better. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Wong, any questions to staff or thoughts?
No, no question.
Mr. Tal?
No, I, and, and I originally shared the concern and, and looked at the legal definition of fowl and felt confident that does not, it's limited as to the application. But is that interpretation correct that there is a legal definition of fowl and that legal definition does not include merely a wild bird that flies through your yard? And the hummingbird that might be on your, your feeder?
Council member, thank you for that question. I would defer to the city attorney on that. My understanding is it's specifically directed at this specific type of, of fowl. But if the definition is overly broad, we could certainly look at that. But that was certainly the intent of the ordinance. It's not to dissuade the feeding of other types of birds, hummingbirds or anything such as that.
If you can give me a second just to look up the.
Maybe I could, I could help you there. A fowl is any abe, which is really just a, for the landfowl or the, or the landfowl or waterfowl, waterfowls or ducks. Landfowls are what are known as abes, which means they're typically heavy bodied ground feeding birds. And so the, the definition, if I'm correct, is very limited to the type of animal with. animal with wings, for lack of a better term. I don't want to use bird as part of the definition, but it is very limited. Is that a correct interpretation?
What it says is, "Fowl is all birds, but shall not include canary, lovebirds, mina, finch, parrot, parakeet, or other household bird."
Where are you getting that?
Section 6.01.01.
6.01.01.
We don't have it here.
Yeah.
And then if I look at the specific 6.03.02, which is the section that you're modifying.
I'm sorry, before you get, can you read the list again? Well, it's fine. It should not be happening.
So fowl is broadly defined to basically include all birds except household birds, and then there are exceptions for keep eating of chickens.
For the code.
For the code.
Okay, then, I mean, maybe it is too broad. You should just use the reasonably acceptable definition of what a fowl is.
Or just say P. fowl.
Yeah, say P. fowl.
Not do all fowl.
Well.
Anyway, I'm not going to.
I know, but that's the problem that we're having, and I think that Councilmember Shepherd-Romney or myself are hung up on.
So P. fowl should do it.
Yes, so to the extent that the concern is P. fowl right now, again, on the fowl prohibition, it's a public nuisance to keep, feed, maintain, or possess any fowl. And what was added there was the feed.
Right, so it makes it.
Right, so if you wanted to instead just target P. fowl, you could simply leave that section alone and add, or that sentence alone and add, additionally, it shall be unlawful and declared a public nuisance to feed P. fowl. If you wanted to just simply add that sentence instead of applying the prohibition on feeding to all fowl, and instead just specifically include a sentence that prohibits the feeding of P. fowl, then I think you're fine.
He's also on protected classes.
Well, I guess we'll have to wait for the avian attorney to show up.
Vice Mayor, do you have any thoughts or questions on this?
So if that is a change the council would like to make, that would essentially make this another first reading. We'll approve it that way with the first reading and then bring it back for the second reading that has that nuisance.
And removing feed from the first.
Correct.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I move to wait for reading and read by, am I in the right place? No, sorry. Somebody else is going to.
If I could make a suggestion, just, motion would be to reintroduce for first reading.
Oh, sorry. You're right.
Reintroduce for first reading as amended and wait for the reading.
I move to reintroduce as amended and wait for the ratings.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Talt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Mayor Udi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Move now on to written communications or public writing. Do we have any? And this will probably be a time to honor and recognize Gene Rock, who always had public comment and written writings for us.
That'd be very appropriate, Mayor, if you adjourn the meeting in his honor.
Second.
I don't know, people, I didn't mean to cut off discussion. I would just.
No. Are there any final public comments for people here in the virtual world? Would any council members like to add an item to a future agenda? Seeing none, we will adjourn this regular meeting.
Can I add someone? I think we should also do it in honor of Paul Lee.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we will adjourn this regular meeting to November 17th, 2021, in honor of little Paul and Gene. So in 55 minutes. Thank you.